Hello, hello. All right, good. Excellent. All right, everybody. Thank you for your patience. We're working out a few issues here. We're all part of a big experiment tonight. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody. Thank you for joining us here tonight. My name's Ted Wheeler. I'm the mayor of the city of Portland. I'm joined by my colleagues Joanne Hardesty and Chloe Udaley, who are city commissioners. I'm expecting Commissioner Fritz to walk in any moment. She called me and let me know that her bus was delayed, but she is on the way. I'd like to thank staff at Portland Community College's Southeast Campus for graciously hosting us all tonight. One of the values that we hold as a city is inclusivity. And we're here tonight because we believe that East Portland is the heart and the soul of Portland. And my goal as mayor and the goal of all of our commissioners has been to work day in and day out to do what we can to improve the lives of all Portlanders. Two nights ago, I had the privilege of being in East Portland with representatives of the city to share what we were working on around livability issues and some public safety issues. And tonight, we'll be sharing new projects that will improve the lives of those who are here in the community in a couple of different ways. Portland has long been seen as a leader when it comes to addressing climate change. And you're going to hear some updates on our latest climate action proposals that affect all of Portland, and that certainly includes East Portland. I always enjoy my time here, and I look forward to the conversation tonight. This is part of an effort that my colleagues and I have wanted to undertake for some time to get out of City Hall. Typically, we have our meetings in City Hall. They take place during the workday. And there's a lot of people who can't come to City Hall in downtown Portland, and there's a lot of people who can't come during the workday. So it's my goal to try at least once a quarter to have us out in the community, meeting in the community, and having an opportunity to share ideas with sort of people who ordinarily might not have that opportunity. So that's the spirit in which we're here tonight. Commissioner Fritz is here.
Sorry, I might.
We literally just started.
Yep.
So with that, I will call us into session. This is the Thursday, November 7, 2019 evening session of the Portland City Council. Carla, could you please call the roll?
Here.
Here.
Hardesty.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here. And now I'll turn it over to Legal Counsel, and she'll read some of the rules of order and decorum. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Welcome to the Portland City Council. The City Council represents all Portlanders and meets to do the city's business. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during City Council meetings so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the Council Clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. If it does not, you may be ruled out of order. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When you have 30 seconds left, a yellow light goes on. When your time is done, a red light goes on. If you are in the audience and would like to show your support for something that is said, please feel free to do a thumbs up. If you want to express that you do not support something, please feel free to do a thumbs down. Please remain seated in council chambers unless entering or exiting. If you are filming the proceedings, please do not use bright lights or disrupt the meeting. Disruptive conduct such as shouting or interrupting testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Thank you for helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe.
Thank you. And we are trying a slightly different format tonight. Since we're in East Portland, we wanted to hear from some representatives of East Portland and Portland Community Session by hearing from them. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. My name is Sarah Tilley. I'm the interim dean of instruction for the Southeast Campus here. The Southeast community has really grown this campus. The Southeast Campus at Portland Community College is the most diverse college campus in the state of Oregon, and we are happy to have our city council here today. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
At PCC, we are dedicated to student success and are always looking for ways to help our students complete their education and our local industries find qualified employees. Part of our mission is to make sure that all of our students leave college with an understanding of their power to shape their community and our world. As you all are discussing sustainability on the city council, we are happy to be in partnership with you. To share with you some of our environmental stewardship goals, I have a student leader with me. This is Avi Taylor, and I will let him introduce himself.
Thank you, Sarah. Welcome to PCC Southeast. My name is Avi Taylor, and I am a student leader here on campus. So as students, we have invested our own student fees to ensure our college is pursuing sustainable policies and practices. Over the last eight years, students have contributed over $1 million to support projects such as our cycle center, our learning gardens, and removing plastic bottles from our Coke contract. My favorite part is that any PCC student can come up with an idea and apply for a grant to make PCC more sustainable. Often with this type of work, it is hard to see the direct impact, but at PCC, we see our work in action every day. Students can also participate by... Students can also participate in the Faculty Committee for Sustainability Curriculum. We are greening our education in programs like HVAC and refrigeration, restorative agriculture, and auto mechanics. I am proud to be at PCC where a project like our 4th and Montgomery Building is on track to be Gold Lead Certified. And I just want to say thank you to our city commissioners and to Mayor Wheeler for setting an example in environmental sustainability with housing concepts, transportation planning, and much more. We cannot be satisfied with these accomplishments, but continue to fight for bold change. Leader... Students and elected officials need to lead together, and I am grateful to live in a city and to go to a school that is modeling the way for our country. Thank you. I would now like to introduce some climate leaders who work in East Portland and on the Portland Clean Energy Fund.
Welcome and thank you.
Hello, Council... Sorry about that. Hello, Council members. My name is Jose Mikloskis. Welcome to East Portland, where I live and work. I'm an organizing fellow with Opel Environmental Justice Oregon. On behalf of the Portland Clean Energy Fund Community Coalition, I'm honored to help open this meeting today. It is good to see our elected representatives in East Portland. Well, on the border of East Portland, 82nd Avenue is a dividing line between the Portland that has plenty of sidewalks and street trees and the East Portland communities with brownfields and urban heat islands. On this side of the street, youth attending Portland Public School get free bus passes. Across the street, David Douglas and Park Road Schools districts get transit pass budget cuts. On this side of 82nd, there is robust transit infrastructure. Across the way, we lack basic bus service, bike lanes, and sidewalks. East Portland is where immigrants, youth, communities of color, low-income folk, and seniors live. Our communities face ongoing displacement. We are the front lines of economic inequality and environmental degradation. We are climate justice communities. The poor quality of urban environment makes us healthy. Our asthma rates are higher. Our birth weights are average lower. Our youth and seniors are more vulnerable to air quality impacts. All of this because Portland was zoned from the very beginning to exclude communities of color, and we still suffer from that legacy today. The primary reason why communities of color, low-income folk, folk like me, built Clean Energy Fund, the Portland Clean Energy Fund, was because we know that our communities need. After years of asking for decision makers to deliver on our needs to invest in our communities, we decided to take matters into our own hands. We spoke for ourselves. We faced steep opposition, who were told it was impossible. We did it anyway, and we won. One year ago... One year ago, in November of 2018, 65% of Portland voters stood with us and our vision for a just energy transition, a clean energy future that leaves nobody behind. Thank you for coming to East Portland. Thank you for showing up in our neighborhood. Thank you for coming out and putting together a series of climate actions that represent partnerships with communities of color, including strong PCF committee member appointments, the Rose Lane Initiative, and Zero Cities Project. Thank you for listening to us and for following through with what we started. Welcome to East Portland Commissioners. We hope you return frequently and build on this momentum to continue co-creating policy with us. We are building a new way of doing politics for the common good. We are a new progressive majority working together for solutions that put people first. We have the most to gain or lose from the decisions made here. We can choose the decisions that most benefit our communities, and we can do it together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Damon Mott Story. I use he/him/his pronouns and they/them/their pronouns. I am the Healthy Climate Program Director at Oregon Physicians for Social Responsibility, and it has been long my honor and pleasure and privilege to get to support the Portland Clean Energy Fund Coalition since we joined its steering committee in 2017. And so, as you know, that means it's been a long time in coming. And so today, one year and one day after its passage is a pretty momentous occasion, and it is amazing to be here and to look back at what we've been able to do together. I really want to underline and support what Jose is saying about the sort of this tale of two Portlandes, right? When I first moved to the city, it was to the Quaker Voluntary Service House on 84th Avenue, just a short walk from where we are right now. And I remember feeling like, you know, there was this big discrepancy between the Portland that was shown on Portlandia and my neighbors, right? And so I think it's wonderful that we're holding this session in this space, and like Jose said, I really hope that this is the first of many council sessions that happen this close to 82nd Avenue, and maybe we also hop over the line and go even further east.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And just a few more things to say. Climate change is something that is deeply personal to me. My own mother had to quit the love of her life, her life's work, her vocation of being a hospice chaplain, visiting people in their homes, because her own multiple sclerosis was so exacerbated by extreme heat that she couldn't be doing home visits in the summertime. And to me, that really underscores both the fact that climate change is happening now and impacting people now, and it is particularly impacting people's health. And that's why I do the work that I do with Physicians for Social Responsibility. It means a great deal to me. And, you know, for my fellow siblings who are LGBTQ, they experience a much higher rate of homelessness. 40% of homeless youth are LGBTQ. And so I want to kind of bring all of these into mind as we think about, you know, who is benefiting the most from Portland Clean Energy Fund projects and why it is that we work on climate action issues in a wide variety of ways. So that... Those are some of the reasons why it's deeply personal for me. And one more thing I'll say also is that it's been very interesting to me. It's been Oregon Physicians for Social Responsibility, as you could probably guess, is a primarily pretty privileged group. There are a lot of older, wealthier, predominantly white doctors and nurses and other health professionals that make up our membership. And we really deliberately and intentionally set out on a course of saying, "We want to add our privileged voices to the leadership of campaigns and causes led by communities of color." And so that's why we've been involved with Portland Clean Energy Fund. And I think we can all agree that that is a model that is extremely successful, and this really represents a new way forward, a kind of a brave, brave new world of policymaking. And I'm excited to keep on showing up in that way and encourage other predominantly white organizations to do the same. So with that, thank you so much again for hosting this session here, and it's an exciting day. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you, both of you. Colleagues, I don't know if anybody has any opening statements, or we can just jump right into the business? We'll get right to the business at hand then. Carla, could you please call item 1029?
Nominate and appoint Andrea Hamburg, Jeffrey Moreland Jr., Ranfis Villatoro, and Faith Graham to the Portland Clean Energy Community Benefits Fund Committee for terms to expire on November 7, 2021.
Colleagues, today the city council announces the final four members of the inaugural Portland Clean Energy Community Benefits Fund, otherwise known as PSF Committee, on the one-year anniversary of the passage of this historic measure. Before we meet the final four members, I want to thank all of those who supported and voted for the Portland Clean Energy Community Benefits Fund initiative. The Portland Clean Energy Fund is a testament to the power of community and our city's belief in doing things in a different way. This is a model for inclusive climate action. The initiative, part of our city's continuing commitment to be a climate leader nationally and globally, shows that Portlanders are willing to come together to make our city greener and our workforce more diverse. The November 2018 election showed us that Portlanders vote for and believe deeply in climate justice. We can both build our communities and address our climate without sacrificing one ideal for the other. I'm incredibly proud that we take another step to implement this initiative today. Sam Barrasso from the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability is here to provide us a brief update and help introduce our final four appointments. Sam, why don't you come on up? And if the appointees want to come up as well, that would be great.
Give you a once-changing... I'll bring you...
Okay. Your show.
That's okay.
I'll let you... We didn't rehearse this, folks.
I counted the seats. Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners, thank you for inviting me to this stage this evening. For the record, my name is Sam Barrasso, and I'm the program... Fortunate to be the program manager for the Portland Clean Energy Fund. I'm excited to be here celebrating this occasion for numerous reasons, the first of which, we are out in community. This measure was a beautiful display of the power of community organized to solve some of our greatest... Our generation's greatest challenges. And so this symbolism of being out here for this day is certainly not lost on me, and I thank you all for making this happen. As you all said and you all noticed, this is also one-year-one-day anniversary of the passage of the measure. And finally, we get to see one of the most diverse, powerful, and talented committees I've certainly ever had the fortune to engage. So before I kick off this presentation, just give you a sense of what we're talking about, I'll just provide a high-level overview of the timeline for the Portland Clean Energy Fund, explain a bit about the role for the Portland Clean Energy Fund Grant Committee, describe their recruitment process. And then we'll have actually Shanice Clark, one of our first five appointments that you all made, join us to speak a little bit about the committee discussions they engaged in to nominate the next four that are going to be coming in front of you today. I'll then ask the four members to come up and share a little bit before inviting some invited testimony, if that works. Okay. With that, I want to go ahead, so I'm not sitting alone, and invite Shanice Clark to sit up here with me, who's one of the first five members. Okay. So just to provide a high-level overview, starting next Friday... We're moving quick. November 15, we'll begin working with the nine members on the Committee on Content Briefings, Identifying Program Goals, Metrics, Grant Criteria, and Processes. We're going to do this over the next four months with a plan to put out solicitation for grant proposals in early spring. We anticipate about a 60- to 90-day open application period, followed by a combination of staff, technical, and community review before beginning evaluations with the committee in summer 2020. So we're going to be moving incredibly quickly. We're pushing every gear in this city to move as fast as possible. But then we anticipate bringing the committee recommendations for funding to you all in late summer, early fall 2020, with an expectation of announcing grant awards shortly thereafter. And through all that, a whole range of public input workshops and capacity building that'll get folks ready to apply for those funds. Now, the role of the grant committee falls into a few categories. It's going to be, one, they'll be developing the grant criteria. They'll be reviewing the proposals, ensuring program accountability to the intent and purpose of the initiative. And then they're going to be sending funding recommendations, ultimately, to City Council for approval in late summer, early fall 2020. To get to the grant committee that you'll have in front of you today, the Bureau of Systems Planning and Sustainability worked in collaboration with the Office of Community and Civic Life to solicit applications. We had a robust recruitment where we solicited over 113 applications from mid-May to late July. We then brought together a selection advisory committee comprised of both city staff and a community member to help narrow the pool of applicants for City Council staff review based on a set of criteria set forth in ballot language and codified in the city code. And so what that is, is essentially everyone, anyone that wanted to be considered had to both show a demonstrated commitment towards the climate action plan as well as a demonstrated commitment towards community empowerment of those historically underserved. And then we had specific criteria, which are laid out there in the boxes next, which were, we needed deep expertise in residential renewable energy and energy efficiency, commercial renewable energy and energy efficiency, minority-owned, minority and women-owned businesses, local food and green infrastructure, as well as innovative financing tools. And we needed to have at least two members be east of 82nd. We worked with your staff and you all in order to select the first five, which I have sitting over here to my right. And then those five came back, and right before that process, we did a specific direct solicitation for minority and women-owned contractors as we didn't have a robust enough of qualifying entities. So once you all appointed those folks on September 25, we brought them back together on October 10 to figure out first how they were going to go about deciding the nomination process. They decided to use, essentially, they decided to reference the list that was recommended from the selection advisory committee to choose the balance of their committee members. And it was a robust discussion. And so as we turn it over to the next slide to speak a little bit about this process, I really want to turn it over to Shanice, who is a critical part of those conversations along with the other committee members.
Thank you, Sam. Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Shanice Brittany Clark, and I am a member of the PSF Committee and taking great pride in soon being able to sit alongside eight members of our community who have pledged to co-create this clean energy future we're talking about and address social and economic inequity for women and communities of color. And so I want to talk a little bit about how we arrived here and that commitment through our selection process to what the initiative states, reflecting racial, ethnic, and economic diversity of the city of Portland and including those east of 82nd. So Sam just shared some of those layers of expertise that we wanted to make sure we're centered and identified in the process. And through our deliberations, committee members identified that Ranfis Villatoro as an individual that carries a wide range of experience, including fundraising, program development, workforce development, work with the guiding coalition of the initiative, and is also a resident east of 82nd. And also, we had discussion around Faith Graham, bringing rich experience with health, water, affordable buildings, all to the PSF Committee. And she brings experience as an attorney and so serving on local committees and boards. Andrea Hamburg is a local professioner... Professional, who is rooted in anti-racist work and brings a public health planning perspective that the committee sees as valuable to the work that we're getting ready to prepare for. And Jeffrey Moreland Jr., a community member who we recognize, brings that minority contracting experience. And the company he represents does right-of-way excavation work and is not expected to participate in PSF projects. And we spent some time talking about that in our deliberations as well. So the selection process really, truly elevates diversity of representation, thoughts, background, and expertise to the committee. Meanwhile, the process did present a challenge because we had many qualified folks of color, right, who have potential conflicts of interest due to being associated with organizations that will probably engage with the PSF funding process. And so given the membership of the committee and acknowledging that we are lacking representation from our Native American and Indigenous community, we wanted to give a few asks, and one we all know that Ranfis Villatoro, Faith, Jeffrey, and Andrea are folks that we would love to join us on the PSF Committee. And also, we would want to ask the city council to work with us to identify a thoughtful strategy to continue building capacity for voices and expertise and lived experiences from the Native and Indigenous community and communities of color who our city serves and main being, to have a space for folks to influence the process, engage with our meeting spaces, without having to forego the opportunity to apply for funds and just strengthening those pathways outside of committee membership for relationships and tension and making sure that vision for a clean energy future is still with and in coalition with the communities it's intended to serve. And that's all I have to share about our process.
Very good. Thank you. And I have a thought with regard to reaching out to the Indigenous communities, Native Americans. We're actually right in the middle of our annual City of Portland Tribal Nations Summit. And so we actually have representatives from all across the Pacific Northwest here in Portland for the next 48 hours or so. And so what I can do is actually have somebody on my team push this out tomorrow and see if we can't build some connections and potentially generate some enthusiasm for more applicants. Would that be helpful?
Excuse me, Mayor.
Commissioner Hardesty?
Thank you, Mayor. The measure stated the number of committee members that would be assigned to be on the PSF board. So I don't think we want to add an uneven... I mean, an even number. There's a reason why there are nine members as compared to 10. And so my question is really, there were four slots left that you could have chosen to save one of those spots so that you could actually have recruited and added a Native American Indigenous voice to the committee. And you chose not to do that. So would you want to speak to that?
Of course. I think we were making sense of what that would mean for our timeline and in moving forward with the charge of creating grant criteria on this timeline piece. So I think there was discussion around choosing the members who best meet the needs of the work that we need to do and thinking about other pathways that we can continue to build capacity and relationship with the Indigenous community. But that's helpful to understand that that is a space that we potentially in the future can consider how members are selected and how the timeline can look. But yes, we didn't necessarily process what that could look like to not choose one member and leaving that slot for the Native and Indigenous community, given the timeline.
Commissioner Fritz?
And as Commissioner Hardesty said, that would then have an even number on the committee, which might make things challenging. You mentioned that Ranfis is... Lives east of 82nd. You mentioned that Ramfies lives east of 82nd. Who's the second person that lives east of 82nd?
Mayor Wheeler, Commissioner Fritz, Michael Hill is one of the original five that is east of 82nd.
Fantastic. I was asked at the bus stop by the East Portland Action Plan. So, I said I will find out, so now I know. Thank you.
And I should add, you know, staff is now working on options to come back to the committee to present how we bring some of those additional perspectives. We recognize, and this was acknowledged that, and I think Shanice, you did a great job of acknowledging, it is not the same to not have someone on that body. But we are working with the city's tribal affairs director, Laura John, to start thinking through some of those options and we'll be connecting with folks. Our next opportunity will be in two years where we have the first opportunity to explore whether vacancy presents itself.
If I could also just, people's circumstances change, people leave, people have to step down for personal reasons, so it would...
Might not be that long.
Yeah, so I would encourage you to continue to work with Laura, and she can work with some of the tribal leadership.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Hirsty, did you have another comment? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shanice.
Thank you.
With that, I would like to go ahead and invite each of the appointed committee members to share a bit about their interest and excitement in serving on the inaugural committee. So, I'll go ahead and invite Faith Graham, Andrea Hamburg, Jeffrey Moreland Jr., and Ramfies Villatoro here. I think maybe we'll just start with there and come down this way.
Sure. Thank you, Sam. Mayor Wheeler, commissioners. For the record, my name is Andrea Hamburg, and I am thrilled to be here with you tonight. The success of this measure at the ballot box was one of the first things to give me hope of collective action in a long time. Our changing climate is an unfolding public health and environmental justice crisis. But this moment of change also offers us a tangible and meaningful opportunity to create healthier, more just neighborhoods with benefits such as safe places to bike and walk, clean air, reduced home energy costs, living wage jobs, and parks and green spaces for all of us. I am so excited about the opportunity to work with all of you, all of my committee members, and all of the members of the Portland Clean Energy Fund Coalition who got this ballot initiative on the ballot and over the finish line as we develop and implement a collective vision for our new energy future and do so in ways that follow the leadership of impacted communities and build equity, resilience, and economic stability for our whole city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Mayor Wheeler, commissioners. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Moreland, and I'm very excited to be a part of this committee. What excites me about this committee is that our values and interests align. As Shanice mentioned earlier, I am a minority contractor in the community, so I understand the challenges that have traditionally kept people of different backgrounds locked out of this industry. I believe this committee has the potential to do great things in correcting those issues and start a winning tradition of inclusion and economic empowerment for those that have traditionally been excluded. I would also like to say I'm very impressed with the diversity of the committee that's been assembled up to this point, and I look very forward to working with them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. And my one? Thank you. Now it's on.
Yeah, it works. Thanks.
Mayor Wheeler, commissioners. For the record, my name is Faith Graham. I want to thank you all, Mayor Wheeler, commissioners, the wonderful PSEF staff, and most especially the existing five committee members. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity and for your leap of faith in me, a white lawyer lady. And as Shanice mentioned, that's a complicated decision to make, and so I appreciate the opportunity and hope to live up to everyone's expectations. We are in this climate crisis together, and while that is undoubtedly true, people living with low incomes, especially Black and Brown communities, are most often impacted first and worst by the harmful costs of our fossil fuel-based economy. I've been part of well-intentioned environmental programs, both here in Portland and in other places, and perhaps many of all of us here have, where equity was an afterthought or something we would get to when the program was up and running. Maybe we were rationalizing that market transformation would somehow spread the benefit to everyone. In most cases, however, the results for people living with low incomes and communities of color, those benefits were meager at best and downright harmful at worst. To get different results, to get energy equity, housing security, economic opportunity for those who need it most on a thriving planet, we have to start with different design and we have to recognize different experts. Those closest to the problems are also closest to the solutions. I'm deeply grateful for the hundreds of community leaders, the beautiful faces that was on the opening slides, that made the Clean Energy Fund a reality and put Portland on the map, not only as a climate leader, but one that is pioneering social justice as a pillar of its Climate Action Plan success. I'm excited to listen deeply, to learn from community experts, and to support community leaders as we invest in our place, our neighbors, and our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, commissioners. Mayor, my name is Ramfies Janatino-Villatoro, and I want to first thank the many leaders who dreamed and conceived of the Portland Clean Energy Fund. I also want to thank the many voters who overwhelmingly voted to make this dream a reality. And also, I want to thank the steady team of leaders that have helped continue to shepherd the initiative to this phase. I'm humbled and honored to be nominated for the east of 82nd seat. I will make a personal commitment to represent this seat well and set the foundation for future leaders, whether they be fresh out of David Douglas High School, living in our retirement centers, a monolingual Spanish speaker, a business owner on 82nd, a transit-dependent worker, a single-parent mother facing displacement. To be able to call this seat their own and see themselves in this seat, I make this commitment because I believe that only together we shall overcome. That only together we shall overcome systemic inequality, only together that we shall overcome on climate change, only together we shall overcome on the disparities we continue to see on our construction projects, on our work sites. So, I'm humbled and honored to be here, and I will continue to take that energy and commitment to see that next phase. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I thank the folks here, and I have a few invited speakers to come up and share a little bit about their thoughts.
Could I ask one question, please? Jeffrey, could I ask you a follow-up question? You piqued my interest when you talked about inclusivity and active engagement around contracting. What do you see are some of the opportunities as far as economic prosperity, or where do you see some of the opportunities in either contracting or workforce development? What is the lowest hanging fruit at this point for PSEF?
Well, for PSEF, I would say the lowest hanging fruit is getting people in the workforce. I think the workforce is the foundation of getting inclusion, getting people actually high, well-paying jobs so they can start to, you know, influx of money into their communities is the lowest hanging fruit.
Are there certain areas in particular, solar technology, retrofitting, energy efficiency? Do you see certain areas, given your expertise, that would be logical first places for us to look?
I would say that the easiest route, most people in minority community are carpenters by trade, so I would say housing is usually where you see a lot of diverse workforces. So, that if you have any vertical constructions such as what this committee will be voting on, I think that's the best way to get people in the community engaged is through carpentry.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you. Great. Thank you all. And we'll probably talk about you more when we cast our votes as well.
So, next, I'd like to bring a few invited speakers up here. At start, I'm just going to go ahead and call the folks out. Jenny Lee from the Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon, Anisa Pemberton from 350PDX, Nate McCoy from National Association of Minority Contractors of Oregon. I've got Nate. I might not have Nate. And Taryn Evans from the Coalition of Communities of Color. Let's start with Yan.
Great. Thank you, Sam. All right. Good evening, commissioners. Mayor, my name is Jenny Lee, and I'm here on behalf of Apano. Mandatory disclaimer, as a registered lobbyist, and Apano is also on the steering committee for the Portland Clean Energy Fund Coalition. So, thank you so much for joining us here tonight in the Jade District. Orchards of 82nd, Apano's home, is just across the street, and I'm delighted to welcome you here to our neighborhood. We're proud of the work that we have done in the Jade to build a resilient and healthy community. There are place-based work. We are addressing health disparities, economic inequities, and a lack of resources for our families and communities. And over the years, we at Apano have seen that with strong city and community partnerships, we can build healthier, safer, and greener communities. I'm here tonight in that spirit. Just over one year ago, Portland voters did something historic. We overwhelmingly passed the first environmental initiative led by frontline community organizations, and I'm very proud to have been a part of that campaign. One of the priorities of the initiative was rigorous, community-based oversight provided by a grant committee to be composed of members that represent the diversity of Portland, including racial, economic, and geographic diversity. And tonight, we are so pleased to see the soon-to-be appointment of the final four committee members. This process has yielded outstanding results. In collaboration with the city, we recruited far and wide to bring forth candidates who met the standards set forth in the initiative. And I believe that, as you've seen, the qualifications and experience of the nine members have been truly exceptional and exceeded, I can say at least, what I had hoped for to see this composition of individuals representing so many communities. This level of technical expertise and lived experience is just really a fulfillment of what we worked so hard for last year. So, I'd also like to thank the new members in advance. Serving on the grant committee is no small commitment. Developing a grant framework to create green energy and living wage jobs for underserved Portlanders in a way that truly honors the spirit and vision for justice of the initiative will take a great degree of time and talent. And I am confident that with these final four committee members, that we now have the range of knowledge, vision, and talent that we need to make the fund a success. We're grateful to the members for sharing their experience, expertise, and vision in building this historic program. In particular, I'd like to lift up the importance of their experience in minority contracting, healthy housing, and the intersections of labor and environmental justice. We also know that we will need to make sure that we bring other relevant experiences and knowledge, that they are heard as the committee begins its work. I'd also like to lift up the need that you and the city and current grant committee members have recognized about Indigenous representation and leadership, and we look forward to continuing to work on that. We offer our support in building deeper community connections, and I am confident that all of us here tonight, along with our partners, will do the same. So, we only got here through a strong partnership with the city, including commissioners, staff, and Bureau employees. We've hired stellar program staff with deep community ties, and we are all prepared now to support the grant committee and its program development. So, we look forward to this partnership continuing so that we set the grant committee members up for success. And we need to also continually work to make sure that the communities that the fund is intended to serve have the capacity to benefit. So, we on the Coalition side are keeping busy, ensuring that all of Portland's communities will have the ability to realize their vision for how they want to see clean energy and good jobs look in their neighborhoods for their families. So, thank you again for the opportunity to celebrate this first phase of the Portland Clean Energy Fund and for your work to build this incredible grant committee. I hope that in one year or so, we will be back in some way to celebrate again, having already made critical investments at first round in our communities. And I'm confident that with our ongoing hard work and collaboration, that we will have seen real movement for climate justice in one year. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Wheeler and city commissioners. I'm grateful for the invitation to speak with you all today. My name is Anisa Pemberton, and I use they/them pronouns. I am the Just Transition and Equity Organizer at 350PDX. We recognize that climate change is happening now, and we also recognize that it is already disproportionately impacting those living on the margins of our Portland community. One year after the passage of this historic ballot initiative, we are appointing the final members of the Portland Clean Energy Fund Grant Committee. I am so pleased to see the wide array of skills and perspectives that will be at the table, and I'm so excited to see them recommend applications for grant funds for the Portland Clean Energy Fund. I'm also really appreciative of City Council being in this space, in this community tonight. I live very close to this campus, and I feel very proud seeing east of 82nd represented. Last time I gave testimony, I shared that I grew up in rural Illinois in an industrial-agricultural town that was extremely polluted. Today, I wanted to share with you my lived experience as a working-class person of color in Portland. When I first moved here, my partner, housemate, and I could only afford a very cheap apartment in southwest Portland. I actually rode the bus with Commissioner Fritz. Funny story. The heat of the summer and the cold of the winter could be felt through the single-pane, outdated windows. We had very poor insulation. In these seasons when we most needed relief from the impacts of climate change, we were unable to really get it because of our infrastructure. And when we did try to heat and cool our apartment, it cost us $300 a month. So, we went into pretty hard credit card debt, my partner and I, trying to survive that. I have the privilege of a college degree, and so I was able to move into a higher income bracket, but the debt follows us. It follows a lot of people in our economy. Wages are very low, and debt is very high, and the gap between the rich and poor is growing, as I'm sure you all know. And the reason I share this story is because it's very similar to the people who will be impacted by the Portland Clean Energy Fund, except I hope they have a different ending than me. The Portland Clean Energy Fund is meant to solve these problems for working-class, poor people, for women, for LGBTQ people, and it's really meant to update the multifamily apartments that the working class is living in in Portland and already struggling to afford. It is a truly intersectional program that touches the inequities of race, class, and gender, and it really recognizes that US unemployment, while it's currently low, underemployment is a huge problem in this country. As we celebrate today, I hope we all hold close the impact that the Portland Clean Energy Fund will have on our most vulnerable communities. The Portland Clean Energy Fund Coalition and the city of Portland has accomplished already really great things together. We've hired really very skilled program staff and recruited awesome grant committee members who will safeguard this fund. It is now our shared responsibility to support these extraordinary people and do what we can to clear the obstacles in this path, including incorporating the voices of Indigenous people. It also means we need to put our trust in their eventual decisions and amplify their outreach efforts and offer capacity and expertise. We must focus on our shared efforts to build capacity in the communities that the Portland Clean Energy Fund is intended to primarily benefit. The PSEF program staff at the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability are doing excellent work already in partnership with our Coalition, and our Coalition intends to continue supporting the implementation efforts for a successful program launch. Thank you very much for inviting me to give testimony today and hearing my story. This is a moment we can all take really great pride in, and I'm really excited to see how this program shapes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hirsty?
Anisa, thank you so much for your presentation. I actually had a question, and only because you brought it up. I think one of the biggest challenges with weatherization and making apartments in east Portland energy efficient will be how do we prevent displacement after we do this fabulous job of making those properties so that people aren't spending a small fortune for heat in the winter and then air in the summer? Have you been thinking about this? Because you sound like you've been thinking, I've been staying awake at night because I can't...
Yeah.
There has to be a way that we can make the investment without losing our family housing at the same time. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I totally agree. My understanding is that the legislation includes a, well, Jenny probably can use the right legalese for this, but includes a guarantee that landlords cannot increase their housing over a certain amount, or the cost of housing over a certain amount, and then therefore kick out the people. Because it is a concern that when you upgrade weatherization, that means the property is then worth more.
Yes.
So, then they could do that. Jenny, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, I can also defer to Sam, but yeah, I think that that provision that was included in there, that the interpretation with the grant committee's oversight, that we can come up with a way to ensure that there's not a windfall that comes to the property owner and that those benefits are passed along to the tenants, so similar to other affordable housing incentives or...
affordable housing incentives or opportunities for subsidies or upgrades, that there would be some kind of provision because that absolutely would be contrary to our purpose. At the same time, I am excited for the opportunity that this will help preserve a lot of our low, more affordable, existing housing inventory. I'm very hopeful that we'll be able to preserve and maintain good quality housing.
So I don't know that there's anything currently in the initiative that actually provides that guarantee. And so I think it's important for us to talk to lawyers before we're actually having the first money out the door, so that we are intentional about how we roll it out and what the commitment must be from the landlord, right? I think a year from now landlords will be beating our door down, wanting to work with the Portland Clean Energy Fund to get this benefit. But I think initially, unless we're very intentional, it is really an opportunity for people to act badly, and I just want to make sure that there's no opportunity for bad behavior when we're investing in our community. So, thank you. Sam, did you have a response?
Mayor Wheeler, Commissioner Hirsty. I would just say thank you. I appreciate that, and that's something that's certainly on the radar of staff, and it's certainly a thing that we plan to bring to the committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Hirsty.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Wheeler, commissioners.
Hello.
My name is Taryn Evans, and I'm here today representing the Coalition of Communities of Color. We are an alliance of 19 culturally-specific, community-based organizations throughout the Portland metro region. Almost exactly a year ago today, Portland Clean Energy Initiative passed with over 60% of the vote. This was no small feat and due in large part to the organizing efforts of the PSF Coalition, of which CCC and many of our member organizations are a part. PSF is truly a groundbreaking measure that directs resources to communities that stand on the front lines of the climate crisis. It provides a steady stream of revenue to support clean energy projects and green jobs and dedicates funding to communities most impacted by climate change. Though the passage of this measure represents a victory for our communities, the real test of a measure is in its implementation. The grant committee is charged with an important job of implementing this measure faithfully according to the will of the people who voted for it. We applaud these appointees to the inaugural PSF Grant Committee and thank them for stepping into this important role of service to build and carry out a successful grant program. We are particularly pleased to see experience in minority contracting, healthy homes, and the intersection of environmental and labor issues present in this round of appointments. It is now up to us to support this committee and put trust in their recommendations. We must also work on building capacity in communities that this measure is intended to primarily benefit. PSF program staff at BPS and the PSF Coalition have already begun to collaborate on this work. We must continue this work and ensure that frontline communities that have unduly borne the burden of the climate crisis are well-supported and applying for funding and are able to truly benefit from this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, I'll entertain a motion.
A second?
We have a motion to accept the report and approve the appointments. We have a second from Commissioner Udaley. Any further discussion? Carla, please call the roll.
Udaley?
Well, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. The Portland Clean Energy Fund is a transformative measure that will help fund a just transition to a green economy essential in our fight against climate change and for a better future for all. The work that this committee is tasked to complete will drive social, economic, and environmental justice for frontline communities within Portland who've been denied economic opportunity and often suffer the most from the impacts of environmental degradation. I think there's incredible opportunities with affordable housing that we haven't even realized yet, and definitely anti-displacement and permanent affordability are at the forefront of my thinking around this. I was an early endorser and strong supporter of PSF. I'm confident that these amazing committee members will be outstanding stewards of the program. I thank you for your willingness to serve, and I can't wait to start seeing the results. I vote aye.
Fritz?
This is so encouraging, as was mentioned, and thank you. What a great committee. Thank you to the five who then selected the four. What a great concept to put into a ballot measure and have done, so thank you to our staff as well. Thank you to everybody who came here tonight. It's really very exciting work. Aye.
Hirsty?
Thank you. I like to call myself the mother of the Portland Clean Energy Fund Initiative, only because I put a year and a half into it before I went off and did this other thing. What I know is that we centered racial, social, and environmental justice in this measure. What we were very intentional about was ensuring that frontline communities, those most impacted by climate degradation, would be the beneficiaries of these resources. What I stay up at night worried about is all your new best friends that are going to show up and tell you how green they are and how they just can't wait to be your new best friend and partner with you on this effort. I want to caution you, be skeptical, check the research, make sure that what you're being told is real, and know that I will be there to support you every step of the way. This was a community effort because I'd like to remind folks that the city wouldn't implement it, the city wouldn't send it to the ballot for us. We, the people, had to take it to we, the people, and we, the people, spoke very loudly. At like 67% of them said, yeah, this is the right thing to do. I hope this is a model for other efforts. People shy away from race in this city and this state. They pretend we'll deal with that later, and what we know is that if you don't deal with it on the front end, it's never dealt with. I am proud to be a aye vote for this measure. Thank you.
Wheeler?
That's a tough act to follow. So I'm just going to say, I'm with mother, Mother Hirsty. This is a great group of nominees, and they join five fantastic current appointees, and this was a great panel, and I really appreciate the issues that you raised here, and I want to thank the staff. The only thing I want to underscore that Commissioner Hirsty said is this came from the community. This is a great example of how our community took its values and drove those values through the ballot box to being the policy of this city, and it now puts us in the forefront of addressing the climate action and the intersection of social justice and putting first and foremost those communities that have historically not only not participated from the benefits of these efforts, but who have in fact been steamrolled the hardest by the negative consequences of climate change. And so this is truly a great and extraordinary opportunity. I thank all of you who have chosen to serve on this community, on this committee. It's going to be a lot of work, it's going to be really tough, but I don't think we have empanelled a group of people this talented and this diverse previously in any other capacity. You have my full confidence. I'll be watching this, the city council will be watching this, the city will be watching this, but I'll tell you what, the rest of the nation's watching it too, because it's cutting edge. I'm happy to support. I vote aye. The report's adopted, the appointments are approved. Thank you.
My mom's going to call when you get it. What's this?
Thank you all. Next item on the agenda, and I want to just say, we don't rehearse these things, we're way over schedule, so I'm going to speed things up a little bit, and I know Sam's been talking to the presenters to try and tighten up the presentations. Item 1030, please, Carla.
Authorize a memorandum of understanding to accept assistance, support, and resources from the Natural Resources Defense Council as outlined in the American Cities Climate Challenge Support Package.
Colleagues, we're now going to hear about the American Cities Climate Challenge from the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability and the Bureau of Transportation. In 1993, Portland became the first city in the United States to adopt a carbon reduction strategy. Fast forward to the present day, we continue striving to be climate trailblazers as part of this critical challenge. This year, we're seeing President Trump's decision to formally withdraw from the Paris Climate Agreement. Portland joins many other cities as part of the American Cities Climate Challenge to say to the world, we are still in. We remain deeply committed to meeting America's pledge for fighting for our future. Presenting tonight on this MOU are Policy and Planning Projects Group Manager Art Pierce and Chief Sustainability Manager Michelle Crim. Good evening, welcome.
All right, good evening. Thank you for having us. We've been asked to give you kind of the express version of this presentation, so we'll do our best to bring you through.
Please, I appreciate that. Twenty slides, twenty seconds each.
You're right. Absolutely. We'll give you the Pachacucha version of this show.
Thank you.
So we're going to give you a very quick recap of the climate challenge. You've heard some updates about this previously, some update of the progress that we've made to date, and very specifically, we're asking for your approval by resolution for the memorandum of understanding with NRDC that is bringing us the resources that we're receiving through this challenge. Very quick overview of what this is. This is a two-year challenge that was launched by Bloomberg Philanthropies, very specifically focused on the objective of augmenting and accelerating climate action in response for cities, and there are 25 of those cities that received this award, which is about 2.5 million of technical support and resources for participating cities. Quick visual of the other 24 cities that are part of this, a really august group of cities from all throughout the country, really focused in on reducing emissions from transportation and decarbonizing energy is the focus of our specific application. It goes without saying that those are the most important sectors for us to make change and address, transportation being 42% of our Multnomah County carbon emissions and building energies being about 40% as well. On the good news side, Multnomah County, we are continuing to outbat our peers nationally, and we are trending in decreasing direction generally for carbon emissions, and so that's an encouraging aspect. I think the most discouraging really, in particular, lies on transportation, but also on building energy continuing to need to push declines. For transportation, we're seeing an increase for sectors in terms of our specific contribution to that, and so it sort of heightens the challenge for transportation actions that help us address these impacts. All told, as part of the climate challenge, the 25 cities that are participating in the climate challenge will contribute to a reduction of 40 million metric tons by 2025, which is the equivalence of 8.5 million cars off the roads or 10 coal power plants closed, which is no small-scale challenge or small-scale impact. Michelle's going to talk to you a little bit more detail about the work we're doing.
Great. So for the record, I'm Michelle Crim, the Chief Sustainability Officer, and so those 25 cities can essentially create their own strategy for the work that they're going to do, and we put together Portland's initial proposal for that in 2018 when we applied for the challenge. Over the last year, we've been working with the partners that came to the table through the challenge, as well as the community partners, to refine our goals and our strategies and our tactics that make up our game plan. And you can see here in this graphic on Slide 10, the areas where we have our big moves and the bright ideas that we're looking to advance through this challenge, and we'll go into a little bit of detail on what those are to tell you what we've been working on and what's coming next. As has been a theme tonight, we recognize that while the climate crisis affects everyone, it does not affect everyone equally, and people of color and low-income communities bear the brunt and are disproportionately impacted by climate change. And these frontline communities, together with youth, have not traditionally had a seat at the table to significantly influence the city's climate policies, our priorities, and our investments, and that needs to change going forward. So we're really focused on making sure that any big moves and bright ideas that we're pursuing to achieve the carbon reductions that we're looking to achieve through this climate challenge are done so in ways that are not leaving folks behind and are not exacerbating existing disparities in the community. As Art mentioned, what this challenge does is it brings to the table a lot of resources for the city to tap into to help us do this work, and those resources sort of fall into four buckets, and so on Slide 12, you can see some of those organizations listed. The top left-hand corner, those are organizations that are providing us with project management and capacity building support, the NRDC, Bloomberg Philanthropies, Delivery Associates. On the upper right are organizations that provide deep technical expertise to us, including the World Resources Institute and Rocky Mountain Institute that are helping us on the building side of things, and Nelson Nygaard and Ideas 42 that are helping with the transportation-related projects. The lower left, the Urban Sustainability Directors Network, the National Association of City Transportation Officials are large networks that provide us with opportunities for deepening our partnerships, peer learning, and cities helping each other along the way. And the Energy Foundation is providing financial support to Verde and to Opel Environmental Justice Oregon to help provide capacity to those organizations to actively participate in this work with us. And lastly, on the lower right, are organizations that are helping us to get smarter about how we measure our progress and how we communicate our story, and so we're working with these organizations to help us identify better data reporting tools and to improve the transparency and accessibility of that information.
Commissioner Hirsty?
Yes.
Could you tell me what SEI stands for again?
SEI is the Stockholm Energy Institute, yeah.
Because I thought you were talking self-enhancement ain't helping you.
Oh, yeah, nope, nope. So Art and I are going to breeze through, just giving you a sample of the things that we've been working on and what's coming next. So one of the areas that we're focused on is our own buildings. So city facilities, the energy performance in those facilities. So we've done some benchmarking to look at those buildings, and it's probably not surprising to learn that, particularly in our large buildings, we underperform compared to other similar buildings here in Portland. So we're working with those large building owners and operators, including the Office of Management and Finance, the Fire Bureau, and Parks, to develop an action plan for what are the investments that we need to make in those facilities in order to get our energy performance up. And so we're actively working on that and tapping into those resources from the challenge to help us do those assessments. And part of what we have coming up is to implement the mayor's budget directive related to climate in terms of working with those bureaus that are managing those buildings to come back with a proposal for how we would propose funding, doing both the technical assessments of the improvements that need to be made, the condition of the equipment in those buildings, and then proposing sort of how we would go about financing and investing in our own facilities so that the city can walk the talk as it relates to our own buildings. The other thing that we're focused on is community solar and getting renewables into the hands of community, and so on that, we're working on two fronts. One, to identify what's the right role of the city as it relates to these community solar projects, and then also working to support the development of at least one community solar project benefiting people of color and low-income communities.
And can we make sure that as we do this, we're in coordination with the people that we just appointed to PSF?
You bet.
There's a good collaboration to be had there.
Yes, yep, absolutely. And so what specifically we've been doing is working with Verde and partners that they pulled together, including Hacienda CDC, the Bonneville Environmental Foundation, Grid Alternatives, and the Energy Foundation, with the goal of helping them position themselves to be a developer of these community solar projects when the program is launched by the state here in December. In addition to that, we've identified that the ideal role for the City of Portland to play in these projects is as an anchor tenant, so similar to a mall that needs a big anchor tenant. The city is positioned to provide that for community solar projects. We have plenty of brown energy that we are still using in city facilities that we can reinvest in these local projects. So with that, I will turn it over to Art to talk about some of the transportation stuff.
All right. Well, on the transportation side, one of the key strategies and one of the most effective things that we believe we can do to reduce carbon emission is get more people on transit. This is an effort that I've personally spent a lot of energy in recent years and have been really, really excited to watch this idea catch fire through our commissioner's office and throughout the community. And one of the real big realizations for us was how much this is a City of Portland impact on the transit system, in which we... this is a city of Portland impact on the transit system, in which we have the ability to make better choices about how we're allocating right-of-way to support the transit operations. Already, we've been making progress with the enhanced transit corridors process and are now moving into the next phase, which is the Rose Lane Vision, which we'll hear more about in the next item. So far, even just the small set of actions we did this summer have benefited 75,000 transit riders per day, and that is just access to the three bridges in the central city, Madison, Everett, and Burnside. For instance, the bus that I took to this meeting today, the number two, is benefiting from a 20% less delay in the PM peak hour, very, very significant for what was not that many blocks of change that needed to occur, but very, very hard decision-making in terms of trade-offs for us to take on. And I think it's a good example of the, of how the Climate Challenge is pressing us to question our assumptions further and pressing us through the collaboration with Peer Cities to challenge each other to take these sort of collaborative actions further. And so, through the network of other cities, we are getting best-practice information from the, from the other cities about how they are accomplishing the level of transit speed and reliability, and also through Nelson Nygaard, a local consultant, is helping us with the technical analysis to look at where to prioritize lines. But we are not even close to slowing down on this. In terms of better bus priorities, just in the last couple of days, we saw the restriping in collaboration with the Multnomah County, thank you, Multnomah County, for Burnside Bridge heading eastbound, very, very exciting to see that coming in, and we are working towards a much broader initiative called the Rose Lanes, which the commissioner has done a great job and her staff of pushing forward, and we're heading into deep public involvement in the month of December, and then pushing towards council action, returning to council in February of 2020 with a very specific proposal for the corridors that we'll be prioritizing.
Art, you've forgotten my favorite item, which is experimental application of red paint.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, you're right.
As the arts commissioner.
I'm skipping all the written points, yes, but so, the, already, we have received approval from FHWA to experiment with red, and so you've seen some key applications of that, and we would like to take the Rose Lane concept and initiative and apply it to that red paint experiment, so there's a lot of potential for artistic collaboration as we're heading into the spring months, and who knows where this will take us, for sure. There's continued progress for cycling as well, we've been adding some protected bike lanes within some central city areas, as well as have a number of projects that are underway and in design that will be adding protected bikeways within some of those key corridors. There is construction coming up for Better NATO next summer, as well as construction will start underway for some of these other key corridors on Southwest Fourth, Broadway, and Southeast Hawthorne, so a lot coming in terms of low-carbon response. The key message through all of this, and certainly the message that we heard from the previous item, is that this has to be grounded in people, it has to be grounded in people who can help us implement this change, and so a great part of the overall support package is focusing on transportation demand management, encouragement strategies, and so we're working with Ideas 42 and some other groups that are very good at collaborating around behavior change strategies to help Portlanders adapt to what their new suite of options might be and the behaviors they might need to take to help us reach our climate goals. Over the next year, we will be completing a TDM action plan, looking at the types of mechanisms that we can be bringing out to the community.
TDM.
Transportation Demand Management Action Plan, thank you. Launching a transit encouragement program, and then also targeting some particular key areas to do behavior change sprints, to look at how we can help, in this case, families see about adapting their daily routine to have a lower impact on the environment. This will also include new implementation of the transportation wallet, and where people are able to get transit fares, scooter credits, those kind of things through our programmatic processes. One of the other key moves coming up is we are starting a conversation much more broadly about how to apply our deep focus on equity and environmental justice towards these climate actions, and so we're looking at equitable mobility, partnering with Opal Environmental Justice, as well as other organizations with funding through the ACC, the American Climate Challenge pool, and then we are just on the process of recruiting for a pricing options for Equitable Mobility Community Task Force, and proud to say that we have over 130 applicants wanting to join the next version of a very deep and meaningful collaboration on what are the options and of how we can look at pricing tools to help us further our equity outcomes. This suite of options comes together into a sort of connective tissue where we are looking at the Rose Lane Project, the Central City in Motion interventions, the pricing options, along with the other links to our land use and transportation strategies, to be able to move these options forward in an integrated strategy. So, with our lightning round presentation.
That was brilliant.
Yeah.
Brilliant.
So, very, very excited to bring to you today the MOU with NRDC for the support that we have been receiving.
NRDC.
Oh, I'm sorry, National Resource Defense Council, who is the agency partner who has brought together the American Climate Challenge support package. And so, this MOU is sort of a crucial step in continuing to get the support, they've been patient with us as we've worked through our steps, but this is a key step to keep the staff person that has been helping us push through all this work, as well as the suite of technical resources that we're receiving.
Tell us about the Embedded Climate Advisor.
Oh, yeah, so Emma Segor, who's in the back, maybe she can wave.
There she is.
Has already proven to be the change agent that the National Resources Defense Council promised us we would receive, and has really transformed already the depth of relationship between us and the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability, as well as the level of intentionality and focus that we've brought to these specific initiatives. It really has been an effective way to augment the momentum we already were trying to create with really targeted resources.
Very good, any questions before we move to any public testimony? Carla, has Commissioner Daly?
We do have some talking points, are we skipping those?
Did you want us to speak?
I'll just save them for my closing.
Okay. Carla, has anybody signed up for public testimony?
Yes, we have four people who signed up.
Very good.
We'll just call all four, Doug Klotz, Harry Simpson, Machu Williams, and Jesse Moran. All come up. Mayor, are we doing three minutes or two?
Why don't we do two, just because I, and I apologize for that, PCC has been a fantastic host, and we want to come back here, so I don't want to overstay our welcome by too much, so if you can, I won't be too hard about it, but if you can try to, try to keep it within two minutes, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Do you want to go ahead and start?
Yes, okay.
You can sit down, you don't have to.
They're going to talk about, you know, are the business factories putting those lids to stop this smog and that coming out? What is going to control the pricing of it, because there's very limited companies that make those smoke things to quit the smoke coming out of the factories? What is going to limit, make sure they're not overpaying on what they need for air pollution? And the other question is, you have limited time, when you voted, voted on the last thing, why did you take so much time? Just pass it, and we'd have more time. I mean, you voted on the last thing.
I can't disagree with that.
Everyone repeated it, this goes on every meeting I've been, everyone repeats, repeats the same thing and say, we're out of time. Why can't you as commissioners, when you agree on something, agree on it and not waste our time? Because wasting our time when you keep on saying the same thing each one of you.
So, we shouldn't have heard anybody else, we shouldn't have listened to the presentations, we should have just voted because we all knew that we wanted to do it?
I mean.
I respectfully disagree.
When you introduce yourself, you agree with the person, don't repeat what the other person says, that'll save a lot of time.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
And you could actually give us good information while you're here?
I, I.
That's fine, that's what we wanted to share.
My reason comes, I thought it would be TriMet, why are we giving TriMet money when they don't, they never knows how to schedule a bus? And I'm, and I know a lot of people here, as I see outside, you see five buses, then none. I had to go into the drugstore on 82nd, but when I crossed the street, five buses passed by.
Okay.
The next one is an hour and a half later, that's really helping the public.
Sorry, thank you. Good evening.
That's why I came.
Hey, good evening, I'm Machu Williams, I'm here with Bike Loud and the Portland Bus Lane Project in support of the Street Trust, and I would just like to congratulate the Office of Commissioner Daly on the unveiling of the Rose Lane Project. If her staff would accept these red flowers in celebration of this event, I'd be glad to offer it to you and welcome rapid development of this transit prioritization out to East Portland to help mitigate the displacement that Portland has faced in recent years. But thank you, thank you so much, Commissioner Daly.
That's very sweet.
Very appropriate gift as well.
I'm Doug Klotz, I just, oh, here to support not only PCEF, but the Rose Lanes, which I think is a great way to increase transit service, make it work better, and doesn't cost very much money, so I'm really glad to see this.
Thank you, and did you want us to?
And I'm Jesse Moran, as the co-founder of the Portland Bus Lane Project, I'd like to thank you all for taking a little idea for two blocks of dedicated bus lane and turning it into a vision to prioritize those of us who are transit-dependent across the city. As a co-lead for the 350 PDx Transportation Justice Team, I'd like to let you know that we will be ready to support you in bringing this idea to East Portland so that all of us may benefit from it equally and urgently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it very much.
And, these aren't roses, they're ranunculus, which happens to be my favorite flower, I feel like somebody must have told you that, it's the nicest thing a man has done for me all week, so. Thank you. No offense, Mayor.
You know what, it was a great gesture, and I really can't top it, that was nice, that was one of the nicer things I've seen at council in a while. Any further discussion? Carla, please call the roll.
You, Daly?
Well, first of all, I want to commend Mayor Wheeler, who, the day after Trump announced that we would withdraw from the Paris Climate Accord, led the council in a resolution saying that we're still in, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, come on, people. Our community must take bold action if we're to live up to our reputation as a green pioneer and combat climate change. As the Commissioner in charge of the Bureau of Transportation, I'm acutely aware that we have been going in the wrong direction in recent years, increasing our carbon emissions from transportation around 9% since 1990. We have to break this trend if we're going to avoid a climate catastrophe. That means we must all rise to the challenge, and the city is committed to paving the way, but we can't do it without the community. We're also committed to doing so in a way that centers our equity values. Climate change is an issue of economic and racial injustice, as well as environmental crisis. People of color and low-income individuals are disproportionately impacted by climate change. My office has been closely involved with the Climate Change, the Climate Challenge team, to ensure we center the voices of our community partners representing historically underserved groups as we advance several ambitious efforts, and I vote aye.
Fritz?
I've served with three mayors, Mayor Adams, Hailes, and Wheeler, and they have had different focuses and different priorities, they've all put climate crisis front and center of their agendas, and I'm really grateful for that, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the good work being done, we all know we've got to do even more, aye.
Hardisty?
I look forward to us both obtaining the resources that help us move forward around addressing the climate degradation issues that we, our communities are confronting. I'm always cautiously optimistic when some fat cat from another state decides that, you know, they're going to give us stuff, right, to make us look good. I think I, my cautionary tale would be that we will have lots of green projects taking place over the next few years, and I want to be very mindful that though there's synergy between the Portland Clean Energy Fund and this Climate Challenge that we're taking on, I want to be very clear that the Portland Clean Energy Fund is supposed to benefit communities of color and not government, and so government could help be a partner by helping to train the workforce, helping with some other things, but we have to be very intentional about making sure that we're not screwing this up when we actually roll it out, and so I applaud the efforts that we are taking, they're absolutely critical to our, to our community, but we are going to be down, going down different tracks that will complement each other, and I hope that there's some opportunity for some real synergy. And let me just say, I live in East Portland, and if you want us on the bus, we actually need buses, so let's start working on that. I vote aye.
Wheeler?
I vote aye, the ordinance is adopted, thank you. Next item, 1031.
Except Report of the Rose Lane Project.
Commissioner Daly?
Thank you, Mayor. I am pleased to provide this report to council about the process we are undertaking to develop the Rose Lane Project. Tonight is our unofficial kickoff for the community engagement phase of the project. We're looking forward to hearing from people who live, work, and/or learn in Portland about their transit needs and challenges in order to best serve the most people throughout our city. I know my colleagues and I are all deeply concerned about our climate and the state of the world we are living for our children. When the mayor assigned the Bureau of Transportation to me, I identified our most urgent priorities as safety, equity, and climate change. These priorities must inform every decision we make about our transportation system moving forward, and lucky for us and our ambitious goals, they go hand in hand, as addressing one is likely to deliver benefits in all three areas. For instance, the Rose Lane Project will improve our transit system, decrease transit commute times, and attract more riders, and getting more people on the bus where they need to go faster is safer, more equitable, and better for the environment. Here are a few facts for you to consider, Portland is growing, and so is demand on our roadways, and we're really not going to build more roads. Transportation, particularly single occupancy vehicle trips, is a significant contributor to our climate crisis and accounts for more than 40% of our local carbon emissions. Congestion has increased rapidly, and buses and streetcars are stuck in traffic, along with all the people on board. I'm happy to say, yesterday on Burnside, I was in a car, and I saw two buses whip by while I waited to get through, and unfortunately, one car, so we might need to work on the signage a little bit more. And finally, transit delay and unreliability impairs people's access to jobs, school services, and other daily needs, and discourages ridership, as was previously noted by a commenter. We need to more than double transit ridership to meet our transportation and climate goals. High ridership transit is the most efficient, equitable, and sustainable way to move people. At the same time, we cannot just use numbers and data to inform our policies and projects. We must engage and listen to the people who are being least well-served by our current transportation system in order to design a better system for all of us. I am a child of the 70s, as old as Earth Day, raised by countercultural parents, as well as grandparents who survived the Depression, so the practices of reduce, reuse, and recycle are part of my DNA. Environmental concerns are nothing new to me, or I'm sure many of you. However, we do have new and alarming information that suggests we're headed for catastrophe if we don't make huge changes in the way we live and treat the earth and its limited resources. Concern is not enough, we need action. With the support of the community, the city, TriMet, and TriMet, the Rose Lane Project stands to be a significant action toward combating climate change. I asked PBOB staff to do a quick back-of-the-envelope estimate on the kind of change we need to see in order to have a fighting chance to avert the path we're currently on. What they came up with was that every resident of Portland who currently drives a single-occupant vehicle needs to reduce their car trips by 50%. For those of us who live in bikeable, walkable, transit-rich neighborhoods, that should be easily achievable, unless your car is part of your job or you have some other challenge. But for the nearly 50% of Portlanders who don't live in such a neighborhood, or have such long commutes that public transportation is not a viable option, we have such long commutes that public transportation is not a viable option, we have to do better. Expanding our network of buses, light rail, streetcars, and continuing to improve our bike and pedestrian infrastructure is a conversation for another day. The Rose Lane Project is focused on improving our existing system and prioritizing mass transit. My Director of Policy, Jamie Duhamel, is here to explain our process thus far and moving forward. We will also be welcoming several community partners, or we are welcoming them, from Opal, the Street Trust, and Rosewood Initiative to testify in the experience and the urgent need for this work. Welcome, Jamie.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening. My name, council, my name is Jamie Duhamel, and I am the Director of Policy for Commissioner Chloe Udaley and a primary liaison for the Bureau of Transportation. I have the distinct pleasure of presenting to you about the process we are undertaking to create a citywide enhanced transit network that focuses on racial equity, climate justice, and direct community benefits. Unfortunately, what you will not be hearing tonight is the proposed scope of the project, as that has not yet been fully identified, but we are very close. Very close, I promise. What you will be hearing tonight are the values we are using to inform that project. In September of 2018, the mayor gifted Commissioner Udaley and our office with the Bureau of Transportation. As you all know very well, our primary focus until that point had been affordable housing development, tenant protections, and civic engagement. So, taking on a bureau of over 1,000 employees on a topic we were not focused on provided us with a unique challenge. It did not take long for us to realize that transportation clearly intersects with all of Commissioner Udaley's values, including racial equity, climate justice, economic justice, anti-displacement, affordable housing, and livability. So, we immediately set about the process of identifying the ways in which transportation can improve lives, create economic opportunity, decrease displacement, increase safety, and slow down the impending climate catastrophe. Lo and behold, PBOT had already provided an answer to us in its beautiful Enhanced Transit Corridors Plan that was unanimously passed by almost all of you in 2018. This plan identifies the types of system improvements that can help make transit more attractive and reliable for people to get to work, to school, and to meet their daily needs, especially for people who are transit-dependent. The Rose Lane Project is simply an accelerated implementation plan that envisions a bold, citywide redistribution of right-of-way and other tools in the toolbox that this plan provides, that helps get buses out of traffic and through the intersections and across town, and makes the system more rapid, reliable, and full. When it came to council, the ETC plan identified the ways in which enhanced transit contributes to a better experience for riders, encourages more ridership, and helps to mitigate new traffic growth. But Commissioner Udaley wanted to approach this project the way we approach all of our work, which is through a racial equity lens that requires authentic relationships with community partners and considers first and foremost the expertise of people with lived experience. This approach was only further informed by our recent citywide training on results-based accountability, which teaches us how to work backwards from a population-level goal and to center racial equity in our policy planning. For those watching in the audience tonight, results-based accountability is a different way of thinking about how to solve for complex problems by first identifying the conditions of well-being that we would like to accomplish and working backwards from there. It requires us to conduct root cause analyses of existing disparities preventing us from achieving those conditions of well-being. But most importantly, it teaches us that policymaking is never neutral. It is always either actively dismantling systems of racism and oppression, or it is actively causing additional harm. We must integrate racial equity into every level of work that we do, and the RBA process is a really great way to do that. So, a big thank you to the Office of Equity and Human Rights for starting us on this journey of greater accountability to everyone that we work to serve in the city. So, when I took the training with several PBOT staff, we started with a condition of well-being that was basically, "All Portlanders will use transportation that is affordable, reliable, healthy, and safe." And when we asked ourselves what the disparities were, again with a lens on race, we identified commute times as a condition of inequity that was causing harm to people of color. According to census data from 2015, and it is likely worse today, we found there was a big difference in average commute times broken down by rates. The data tells us that the average black commuter spends an additional five minutes one way just to get to work. That doesn't sound like a lot when put that way, but that is a 20% difference, which works out to be an additional 50 minutes per week, over three hours in a month, or 40 hours in a year. The average commuter who is black spends an entire work week longer sitting in traffic every year. Add to that the growing body of research that finds commute times are the single most important factor that help people out of poverty and into economic opportunity, and it becomes crystal clear that access to rapid and reliable public transportation must be a high priority and must benefit people of color first and foremost. We cannot create a better transit system that does not incorporate the needs of the communities that are suffering the most disparities because our transportation system was never originally designed to serve them to begin with. That is why we created an internal stakeholder panel that consists of people and organizations that represent a wide variety of users, but who also work with a deep equity lens. This is an informal table, so folks participate as they can, and they come and go. And we're also in early talks with a few other organizations, like the Sunrise Movement, for example, to help round out our representation. This panel is helping our office to identify the ways in which our traditional modeling and technical approach to transportation infrastructure may be inadvertently causing harm to people of color by not considering their specific experiences or needs. I convene this group once a month and ask them to challenge our approach, our assumptions, and our goals. I then take that information back to Commissioner Udaley and PBOT, and we use that to inform the draft proposal. Once we have the final initial proposal gelled by the end of this month, very excited, we will be sharing with the entire city and asking for feedback that will help us finalize the project before we bring it to you for approval on February 13th. And if you're paying attention, that's the day before Valentine's Day, because we love Rose Lanes. A good example of the ways in which our panel has helped inform our assumptions is by helping us create better off measures, which is an RBA term, that center people-based outcomes. When we first developed some sample maps of the potential Rose Lane routes, the assumptions used were technical in nature and centered congestion and delays. That is clearly a very logical and appropriate lens with which to build a transit network. However, we had not taken the time to also use people-based metrics to inform the map. So, together, we identified measures that we will now use to analyze the proposal and identify any potential routes that we may have missed originally, or maybe misidentify the right types of tools in a specific location that best addresses the outcomes that we're looking for. So, as you can see by these measures, we believe that the Rose Lane Project can do a lot of good in people's lives. Our primary goal is to make it easier for people of color to shorten their commute time and access work. In addition, we believe this proposal can make public transit a viable option for people to choose for trips to work, school, and other daily needs. We believe it can provide some additional freedom for people to choose where they want to live and work. We believe reliable public transportation can help lower costs, both in time and money, in comparison to owning and using a car. And finally, we believe that we can positively impact air quality and the health impacts that air quality creates, particularly in communities of color. I want to make a special note about the last better off measure, as I have focused most of this presentation so far on racial equity. I know you are all aware of this, but it bears repeating at every opportunity. And that is that transportation justice is economic justice, is climate justice, is racial justice. They are deeply intersectional. And when we center justice for people of color, we are also centering climate action and economic opportunity. Everybody at this point knows that carbon emissions contribute significantly to poor air quality. Unfortunately, emissions from the transportation sector as a whole are moving in the right/wrong direction and are currently up by 8%. What we also know is that the health impacts of poor air quality, including asthma and cardiovascular disease, are disproportionately experienced by people of color, because they are more likely to live in parts of the city that have been under-resourced, have less green space, more industrial activity, and have more car-centric infrastructure. Making a system that gives people more options will go a long way to decreasing these emissions and improve quality of life across the city. Last slide. So, we have a lot of questions left to answer, and the scope of the proposal is getting refined as we speak, but tonight, we are kicking off our public process. We have PBOT staff here in the back of the room, if you haven't noticed already, with information about the proposal and the timeline, including the types of tools in our toolbox that we are considering. They're eager to hear from the public. I'm also happy to announce that as of 4:30 this afternoon, we have launched our project website, so folks can go there to learn more. Just a little correction. I published, I put this together before it published. The project website is Rose Lane, not Rose Lane Project. So, don't add the project at the end of that web address. In addition, we'll be holding three open houses in different parts of the city, as well as a survey, all in the first week of December. The survey and the open houses will include the proposed map of Rose Lanes and more detailed information about the pilot project as a whole. We are looking forward to integrating the information we receive from the public with everything we have learned from our community partners to create a truly thoughtful and meaningful system that improves people's lives. So, thank you for listening to me, and now I would like to invite a few of our community partners to provide their perspective.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and commissioners. My name is Gabriela Zatania-Lopez, and I'm a longtime resident of Portland, actually growing up next to Paul Butte. So, welcome to my set of town. And I am the Bus Riders Unite Organizer for Opal Environmental Justice Organ. Opal stands for Organizing People, Activating Leaders, and we organize frontline communities most impacted by environmental injustice. I am here today to demonstrate our support for the Rose Lane Project. Our members and my colleagues, Maria Hernandez Segoviano and Tristan Isaac, who are not able to be here today, have been working diligently to co-create a plan that can bring the most benefits and lessen burden long-term, while setting a precedent for projects such as this one that can continue to be led alongside our communities. Portland has had a long history of community resistance to environmental racism and classism. It is important for us to continue to recognize that history as we continue to think about what we would like to leave behind for future generations. And things are changing, and with coalitions like the PSF, or the Portland Clean Energy Fund, that are frontline-led and change, so the change is positive. And we want to congratulate Jeffrey, Andrea, Ramfis, and Faith for becoming part of the grant committee. And as a PSF member, Opal looks forward to the leadership that you'll bring to this work. We know that this process, that when a process is co-created with communities most impacted by the issue, we get better outcomes, equitable ones. The Rose Lane Project is an example of that, and it continues to be built with community. We appreciate the leadership of Commissioner Udaley, Jamie, and the team at PBOT have taken with us and partners to push for transportation justice within this project. We look forward to continue working with y'all and make sure that this pilot is a successful one. Pilots like Rose Lane have already been implemented in other cities and have benefits of real reliability, safety, ridership, and much more. Our members who are transit riders and who are further and further pushed out to the fringes of a city due to housing crisis, projects that can increase, and prioritize products that can increase access to lifelong resource that is multimodal transportation. This pilot program has taken an intersexual approach to answer the demands of transit riders who deserve a safe, reliable, accessible, and frequent and affordable transit system. The process thus far has been meaningful and one that in which our challenges become opportunities to explore bolder action. Because even after this project, we are not done, and we must continue to invest in transportation justice beyond the transit network downtown. Our communities in outer parts of Portland can also benefit from red lanes. The Rose Lane Approach can address climate change resiliency, also advance equity, including racial equity and transportation justice, provide the transportation choices for a growing city, to increase transit ridership, and help meet our 25% transit mode share by 2035, thus helping the region's vision to make transportation frequent, convenient, accessible, and affordable for everyone. And as we continue with this process, we welcome the opportunity for further discussion on how such projects can address any unintentional consequences that can come as part of it, particularly when dealing with enforcement and how we collectively can approach providing the resources for our communities to know such products are in place, so that benefits can be seen immediately. Again, we really appreciate the leadership of the Rose Lane Team, and we are thrilled to continue working together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Cam Marks. I'm the Director of Transportation Equity at the Rosewood Initiative, and I am a paid lobbyist. I want to thank Commissioner Udaley, Jamie, and PBOT for the wonderful leadership that they have shown on this project. Rosewood Initiative 100% is in support of the Rose Lanes. I am winging it tonight instead of preparing, or going from prepared remarks because I, over the last couple of weeks, I've spent more time on buses going between meetings than I have actually being able to be at my computer to type up those comments. You've already heard about the environmental benefits of the Rose Lanes. I want to focus on another benefit that has not been mentioned tonight. As the community grows, and the population grows, I should say, and we have more vehicles on the roads, we also have more opportunities for people to be, for collisions leading to deaths and serious injuries. The city is on record and has done a wonderful job moving towards Vision Zero. But we cannot achieve Vision Zero if we keep adding vehicles to the roads. We have to reduce vehicles. We have to shift the mode share to transit and other modes. This project helps in that respect. I have had, been very grateful to have, be able to put input into the process so far, and look forward to working with the Commissioner's Office and PBOT to build out the network to ensure that East Portland does benefit from this project. We have roads like 82nd Avenue, 122nd, Stark, Division. These are prime candidates to get Rose Lanes and to improve the transit system. People will not take the bus if they have a choice that is more convenient than the bus. And right now, that convenient mode is driving. We have to do everything we can to make transit as viable or more viable than driving a vehicle. Another thing that we have to keep in mind as we move forward is we need to bring our partners in the region along with us. As Metro moves towards the Transit 2020 measure, we need to ensure that funding for enhanced transit is part of that project for every road that is being funded by the, or projected to be funded under that measure. We also have to ensure that TRIMET does its part. If we're going to be allocating road space for buses, then we need to make sure there are buses in that space.
Yes.
We cannot have a dedicated bus lane and have a bus running every 15 minutes. That is an inviable situation politically, but it's also an inviable situation for our system. TRIMET must increase service wherever Rose Lanes are provided. We have an opportunity to do that with this. And I and Rosewood look forward to working with you to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cam.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Wheeler, commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Udaley and Jamie, for allowing me this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Street Trust, who alongside Opal and Rosewood and the other organizations you saw are part of you saw are part of this working group working on the Rose Lane Initiative. My name is Rita Portel, and I am the Advocacy Director at the Street Trust, an education and advocacy organization working to improve conditions for walking, biking, and public transit and to ensure that community members of all racial backgrounds have access to safe, healthy, and affordable transportation options where they live, work, play, and pray. Buses are really the workhorse of our transit systems, serving millions of rides each year, and much of our ridership is made up of low-income and communities of color. Given the history of displacement in our region, particularly of communities of color in Portland, there's really an overdue need for displaced communities who have been pushed out of the central city to, at minimum, have easy access to the jobs, recreation, and community that they are now further away from. Making buses move more quickly and reliably is crucial to get, both getting current riders where they need to go more quickly and for supporting this mode shift to make public transit the more attractive option for those who do currently have the choice and choose to drive. The Street Trust was a strong advocate for the Enhanced Transit Corridors Plan adopted by the city in 2018, and we're really excited to see that that plan is just not sitting on a shelf and rather being made into reality, but in partnership with a diverse and insightful group of community advocates. As a city, we really have momentum in this work, and we should not lose it. To truly be a transit-friendly Portland and meet our climate goals, we must take these steps towards making public transit the most convenient option of how to get around. As a mission-based organization, we know that while much of the work is to support policies that make it easier for, generally easier for people to use alternative modes, we must also be co-creating these policies with the people they affect in order to put forward solutions that work best for different communities. That's why coalitions like the one convened for the Rose Lane Project are crucial in elevating voices of low-income people, transit riders, small-business owners, communities of color, elders, people with disabilities, and others who will be impacted by Rose Lane Initiative. I myself am reliant on our transit system to get to where I need to go, and I think these voices of those who use the system and who would use the system if it worked better for them are really necessary in solving for a lot of these barriers. I know today you're simply receiving an update and not necessarily making any decisions on the Rose Lane Initiative, but we're really glad to be here and look forward to earning your support and leadership in moving forward really transformative changes to our transit system, and in doing so, improving the lives of many current and soon-to-be transit riders. Thank you all.
Excellent. Excellent presentation. Thank you. Unless there's any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Hardesty, second from Commissioner U. Daly. Please call the roll.
U. Daly?
Well, I just want to thank everyone who came to testify today. Of course, thank Jamie, who has been instrumental in this process, as well as my team at P-Bot. I especially want to thank Street Trust for this awesome poster. And I want to send a message to those in our community who are currently white-knuckling their steering wheels and really not liking this change. This is going to make life better for people who drive as well. The only way to reduce congestion is to get cars off the road, and the only real way to get cars off, meaningful way to get cars off the road is to vastly improve our public transit system. So please, please consider supporting us in this effort, even if you never intend to get on the bus for the rest of your life, although I hope you do, and I vote aye.
Fritz?
So I'm still thinking about the flowers. The nicest thing Amanda's done for me this week is that a young man gave me his seat on the number-two bus, and I really appreciate it because that bus was blooming full, packed sardines. So Ken Marx, I absolutely agree with you that we need more buses in these nice new lanes. Thank you, Commissioner U. Daly, for this initiative, and I really appreciate it. I'm from England, and you don't look at the bus schedule because there's going to be one every five minutes, and that's what we need to get to, to get people out. So I live here at PCC Southeast. I live by PCC Sylvania. It's going to take me an hour and 25 minutes to get home, and that's if I happen to hit all of the, and that's actually fortunately not having to walk the last mile home if I can catch the 44. So it's just an example of, it's not easy for people, and if you're trying to get to jobs, to daycare, to pick up supplies, you need to be able to have a reliable bus service that gets you relatively close to your house. And then, of course, it'd be nice to have sidewalks as well, but we can't have everything. So anyway, I think this is a real...
I should have had to take a jab.
Hey, I've, we had the Transportation System Plan discussion, and I voted with everybody else to where we can put sidewalks, we should do it in East Portland because that's where the most disparate impacts are, so that means that there are not going to be sidewalks in Southwest for the foreseeable future, and I voted for that, which means that the transit should get us a little bit closer to where we have to walk along streets with no sidewalks and no streetlights. Anyway, thank you very much for this report. Aye.
Hardesty?
Bless you, Commissioner Fritz, that you, after a very long day, will spend an hour and 25 minutes trying to get home. I think people in East Portland feel your pain because when I ride the bus, it certainly is an hour and 20 minutes, and that's on a good day when the bus is actually stopped to pick you up. So I am grateful that we are moving forward with this proposal. I am appreciative of Commissioner U. Daly's efforts to ensure that East Portland is included, but I'm ready to go and picket TRIMET myself because I think we give them an awful lot of money for the little we get back. So I hope, I hope that this is the, one of those other little nudges that pushes TRIMET over the edge to actually provide service for people who need it. I vote aye.
Wheeler?
Well, I am enthusiastically supportive of this. You know, from my perspective, I understand that there are people who are going to be upset about this. There's no question about it. It's a fairly radical change in terms of how we move our transit system, but the reality is this: if we do nothing, more people are going to continue to move here, there will continue to be more automobiles on the streets, and the congestion will continue to increase, and that means the transit system will continue to be stuck in that same congestion. If you create an alternative strategy that can speed up the transit system, that makes the value proposition to individuals much better to choose transit. So a lot of people who are sort of on the fence, "Should I take the bus, or should I drive?" If you speed up the transit system, that will encourage a lot of people to keep their cars parked and take transit. And Commissioner U. Daly made a great point that I hadn't really thought about, which is, you know, some people are still not going to have readily, you know, ready access to transit for a lot of the reasons that have been described here. But for a lot of people, it will make it worth their while to take transit instead, and that will take cars off the road. So if you still have to drive, that will actually make your commute shorter, too. So there is a win-win to be had here, and the reality is, we cannot create more roads through our already fully-developed grid system here in our city. And as more people move here, we therefore have to improve the transit system. And this, to me, is a real logical way. It's a first step. It's not experimental. It's been done in other cities to great effect. It will have the same positive impact here. So I thank everybody who's worked on this, Commissioner U. Daly, and Jamie, and all of our community advocates who've worked so hard on this for so long, the Street Trust and everybody else. This is great work. I vote aye. The report is adopted, and we'll move forward into the future. So thank you for that.
Good question.
Now, Carla, I want to do the last item justice, so I'm going to pull it with permission from the people who are here to present that, and they agree that they would prefer that we pull it and that we give it a different time slot. So if you could read it, and then we'll, I'll take it back to my office and we'll move it to a different night.
Item 1032, Report on the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability Zero Cities Project.
So could we get Vin Mason and Oriana Minera just to raise their hands and be acknowledged, please, for being here? Thank you, because we do want to hear this report. It's a really important item, and I want to do it justice. I don't want it to be truncated. So thank you for your forbearance. With that, colleagues, we are adjourned.